Welcome to the East Haven Public Schools 2020-2021 Year in Summary. So, obviously, I think it's appropriate to start with our belief statements, right? There's great importance placed on common beliefs when creating the best educational experience that you possibly can for our kids. All of our board goals that were developed are deeply rooted in these beliefs as well as the mission statement. And I think there has to be a really strongly held belief throughout the community about the importance of academic achievement, and that any student can succeed and grow and develop when we have alignment and coherence amongst our programming, our curriculum, our instruction, and our operations, and our talent. So, this should be very familiar to you, right? This is goal number one, Culture and Climate Board's Goals, and some objectives and criterias and outcomes listed below as part of this goal. So, our district probably has encountered the most challenging moments in the history of American education this entire year. It was difficult emotionally, it was challenging physically, it was mentally exhausting, and at times it was super nerve-wracking. We were not able to experience, in the traditional sense of the word, a truly normal year. So, for this year, our Culture and Climate efforts were very, very grounded in safety and security. To encompass sort of the Culture and Climate of our district, this is my theory of action that I work under. It overarches our goals and objectives so that we can identify key areas for our improvement work. It talks about if schools address the individual social-emotional needs of the whole child, including teaching to develop social-emotional behavior and self-care skills, then students will have the necessary skills to be successful, collaborative, productive, and contributing members of society. What I like about Culture and Climate is that it's all about trust, right? When there's a sense of trust across the school and the community, solutions are achieved efficiently, ensuring that teaching and learning continue with minimal disruption. And that's why we seek to build a very strong Culture and Climate. This year in particular was really all about the health, the safety, and the well-being of our students, our staff, our family, and our community. That was our primary focus under Culture and Climate. And this year, more than ever, we've partnered and worked with outside agencies like we never have before. For safety and security, it started with a massive reopen plan before school even started that required us to rework the entire operations of our district. That reopening plan identified health strategies, transportation modification, food services modifications. Principals had to rework the entire operations of their buildings, right? We had to rearrange arrival and dismissal procedures, lunch waves, take furniture out of classrooms to create more space, redesign special schedules. Basically, the operations in the traditional sense of our district were totally flipped upside down, and we had to redo everything in a couple months to prepare for a full in-person return. So around that, communication was really important. Julie presented how we've been communicating with families, how we've been seeking their input and their feedback, need to hear their voices so that we can incorporate that into our plans and be responsive along the way as we implemented them. I know the board saw a lot of my weekly updates and communications. We had posted new sections on our websites, built out a COVID tracker, had links, a whole resource hub posted on our website. The amount of work and material that was communicated was very vast this year. In the middle of all that, we were able to continue our work with building the skills and attributes around our East Haven vision of the graduate. And we have a draft plan of those attributes that will soon be rolled out to the board and faculty and staff. And we will continue our work on unwrapping those skills under those key attributes and embedding them in rubrics that then will be measured based on student performance. This year was really unique because while we've had rich relationships with a lot of our partners in district, we got to work with some other key agencies throughout the community this year, really closely with the Police Department and the Fire Department, and very intimately with our school-based health centers as well as East Shore District Health Department because their areas of expertise became our areas of expertise. Identifying positive cases, looking at the data, contact tracing, following protocols, quarantine guidelines, flexing kids in and out of school. The amount of work that we did around safety and health and well-being wouldn't have been possible without our key partnerships. And finally, one of the major focus this year while kids were returning to school and/or participating remotely was making sure that we were being cognizant of their social and emotional needs. Things were different. Connections may not have been as deep because of the distancing and the mask, so holding on to their social and emotional well-being and being responsive to that was really important. And finally, even though we weren't able to engage with our parents the way we wanted to in face-to-face settings, Julie and her team and our principals found really unique and different ways to do that. As I move on, that was just sort of an overview of some of our things with Culture and Climate. And as I move on, we looked at a lot of data this year, but one of the primary sources of data we focused on was health data, COVID data. So for us, the data was a priority. While we looked at portions of the data on a daily rate, we examined the complete data set every week with the Police Department, the Fire Department, East Shore District Health Department. And there were many late-night calls and conversations well after hours, early in the mornings, around quarantine, case rates, looking at the need to close schools, flex grade levels into quarantine. There was a lot of movement in district. This is an example of some of the health data we took a look at on a daily and a weekly basis. I just pulled up data from April through June, and you can see the East Haven weekly COVID cases from April to June. And you can see a steady decline from April 25th all the way to today, or last week rather, June 23rd. These are the monthly cases, so we would look at the cases on a daily basis. And then on a weekly basis, and then we'd look at it on a monthly basis. And you can see, look at through the months of December and January here. Really difficult times, flexing kids and teachers in and out of remote learning, quarantine, in-school, out-of-school. Successfully, as best possible, transitioning everybody. But this data really helped us make those key pivots that we needed that were outlined in our reopening plan. We also focused on the case rates per 100,000. Back in, let's see, February, it was at 40.6, and currently, as of 6/13, it's at 1.8. Huge fluctuations in the health of our community. As we headed in towards the spring, what became really, really important was vaccinations. We became experts in running vaccine clinics for 500 staff members, then for students in our high school, then for families at pop-up vaccination clinics at some of our school sites, inside, outside. We partnered with other schools, Branford High School, North Branford High School, and created opportunities for vaccinations. Right now, our community, 54, just under 55% are fully vaccinated with their two shots, and about 50% have at least one shot at this period of time. Vaccination rates by age became a piece of data that we would look at so that we could make determinations whether we needed to run additional clinics. And that became evident that we only have just over 50% of our 16- to 44-year-olds in our East Haven community vaccinated at this time. We have just over 70% of 45- to 64-year-olds vaccinated at this time in East Haven. And at 65 and older, it is over 80% fully vaccinated. Our goal and our work will continue this summer for this age group right here because I think that there's going to be a direct relationship between that number and what the return-to-school guidelines look like, in particular, related to masks. So, again, we'll be hosting and pushing some clinics so that the availability of vaccine is there for our community members and our students and their families in a very convenient manner. When we think about Culture and Climate, we also think about our standard data sets, our chronic absent rates, our in-school suspensions, our out-of-school suspensions, and our expulsion rates. We have been very, very focused, you've heard me talk about this at length, over and over and over. We know that these two data points have a direct impact on a kid's ability to learn, develop, and achieve. If they're not in school, we can educate them. So you can see, our chronic absenteeism rate back in 1617 was almost at 16%. In 1920, it was just over 10%. Now you have to realize that that number is only through March when we shut down school. The 2021 rates have not been published yet, but I am anticipating that that number most likely will go up due to some challenges around getting kids to attend remotely, and also due to kids not being able to attend for illnesses or parents being cautious in keeping them home. Our in-school suspension rate has drastically reduced, and that's a result of our family engagement and connection work, our social-emotional learning work, and also our restorative practice work. So you can see drastic declines in there. And then finally, our expulsion and our suspension and expulsion rate is way down as well, and I expect that to be lower as reported for 2021. One of the things that was really important around this data is traditionally in a regular school setting, we only have to do attendance codes for in-person learning. Well, this year, we had to rework our entire way that we took attendance because not only do we have in-person learners, we had remote learners. We were tracking attendance for two different groups of kids, and so we had to create a whole nother set of codes, a whole nother set of reporting criteria, a whole nother set of tracking criteria. And then, we had to make sure that it was in compliance with not only our district policy, but our state policy. Policy is important, right? So that was a huge lift. We needed to know and be sure that our codes were reflective so that when we looked in a kid's record, we really knew if they were in school, if they were homesick, if they were on quarantine, or if they chose remote learning. And if they were in remote learning, were they attending or not attending? So lots going on this year in terms of attendance, but we did it. We lifted up that whole attendance piece, we created the codes, we moved forward. Julie presented some of this data, so I'm not going to go through it specifically, but you saw our efforts relative to parent and family engagement and input, and you saw our desire to develop those strong relationships and be supportive. And in the survey data she reported in the differences from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, we saw growth in those strategies and growth in our ability to do it more effectively. In particular, at the beginning of the year, we started off with a remote learning model that may not have been received well from parents, right? 60% of the parents in the beginning of the year reported that they were satisfied with the remote learning model. So what did we do? We took that input, we changed, we revised the entire remote learning model after the start of the school year and responded to their feedback and created live streaming instructions so that every kid, whether you were in person or at home, had access to what was going on in the classroom and access to every single course offered here at the high school and across our entire district. And so our satisfaction rate relative to learning model went up over 80% by the end of the year. So, Culture and Climate, super important, highly focused on it this year. Partnered with the Food Pantry, the Rotary, the Chamber, the Knights of Columbus, local churches, the town, our school-based health center, the diaper bank, it goes on and on and on. Academics. Goal number two, this should look familiar to you. It's about analyzing data, publishing a highly effective curriculum, implementing evolving technologies, and making meaningful connections with kids and alumni. And under the leadership of our board and administration, in addition to in-person access to special education and related services, the district was able to provide digital accessibility for any student who received special education services under IDEA or had a 504. Our goal was not necessarily to replicate the whole school day at home, but to provide really robust in-person learning with remote students so that they were still connected to the school community, yet we were still able to meet the diverse needs of our special education students, our ELL students, and our students in need of deeper levels of academic or social-emotional interventions. So, if schools develop high expectations for all students, provide supports designed to meet the individual needs of students, and ensure teachers have the skills to assess students' needs and provide effective instructional interventions, then students will successfully meet and exceed state standards for performance. Standards guide our instruction, not the assessment blueprint. High-quality assessments items have a way of clearly illustrating the cognitive demands and expectation of content standards, so when we develop our curriculum and our instruction around those standards, kids will excel on that assessment. So in terms of curriculum, what you're going to hear about in some of the subsequent slides are revisions, how we publicly posted it, new courses that were developed, new pathways. We made significant report card revisions and family partnership learning guides. We expanded programming and are continuing to expand next year with new manufacturing pathways. We are adding a whole bunch of SCSU courses for college credits for our high school kids. We have our capstone, and Jen's going to speak to some of the pathways in just a few minutes. This year, we found great opportunity too. We know that after our students graduate from high school, they'll live in a world that will frequently require them to learn and work online. So as we explored options for teaching and learning, we were also providing opportunities for our students to learn vital skills, stuff like self-regulation, time management, organization, and things of that nature. In terms of technology, we did a lot of expansion of infrastructure and hardware. Since July 1st, 2020, the tech department has closed 3,340 support calls and added 1,372 devices to our network. Last year, we provided for fast, secure internet connectivity with a minimum downtime of about four hours. And of those outages were the result of regional or national problems. And every day, we continue to mitigate dozens of electronic attacks and intrusions from outside parties every hour. Tech services, along with principals, ensured that every single one of our students had the capacity to log on, had the tools necessary to engage and succeed. So let's talk a little bit about where we were prior to the pandemic. As you know, we get an accountability score from the state. Prior to the pandemic, we were seeing an upward trajectory. Our Accountability Index in 1617 started at 65, two points up in 1718 to 67, two points up to just under 70 in 1819. We didn't test in 1920. Had we tested and finished out the year in 1920, we anticipated we would have had an index over 70% and continued that trajectory. Same thing with our smarter balance growth in math and our smarter balance growth in ELA. Each one of those trajectories are showing between a 2 and a 4% increase over the last three years. However, no tests in 2019-20 to continue that trajectory. In 2021, test is given, a new baseline is going to be set that we'll have to work from. But I want you to know that our efforts and our work was translating into growth, steady systemic growth over time, very close to the state average. This year, we looked at new data sets. We were able to take a look at data in terms of monthly learning model. And you can see, we had a lot of, this right here is fully remote, this yellow. So for the most part, all of our kids were in-person or hybrid because they were quarantined or moving back and forth to in-person versus remote model. This yellow is fully remote model. We saw a spike in the number of students who were attending remotely in December, January, and February, and it started to come down in March and April. That exact trend followed in every single school. Here's Ferrara School. You can see, in October, most of our kids were in-person. In January, we had a larger number of kids remote, and come April, a lot of our kids returned. So we tracked it every single month. How many kids are in-person? How many kids are remote? How many kids have to go hybrid because they're moving to remote because they're quarantined? Looking at this data was really important for us, and reporting it to the state accurately was really important for us. This bottom, I took an example of Grove Tuttle School on how we were tracking attendance. So, this right here, this large block is perfect attendance each month. And then, you can see, right down here is chronic absence, so 10% of the school days being missed. Tuttle School in 1920 had like a 6% chronic absent rate. This year, the chronic absent rate went up a little bit. But for the most part, we had kids with satisfactory or perfect attendance. Again, making sure that we were tracking this accordingly mattered. And don't forget, an absence is an absence. It's not excused if you're sick in the state's eyes. So, with the increase in kids getting sick and the increase of parents calling their kids out sick because they're not feeling well to err on the side of caution, we're going to see an increase in absence. So the next few slides, Jen is going to start to talk about some key areas that we started to build this year behind the scenes. So, over the course of the next slides, you're going to see these progressions or these stages. These four stages start with exploration, which is, what is the data saying? What is it telling us? What do we need to address? Let's gather some input, and can we start identifying some strategies? Then you move to installation. The installation is the actual work. We saw this in exploration, this is what we have to do, let's roll up our sleeves, we're developing new standards, we're writing new curriculum, we're doing the work. Then you move to initial implementation. That's, we're rolling it out, we're supporting teachers with PD, and we're monitoring to make adjustments and be flexible to make sure we're getting it right. And then finally, we're in full implementation. After we work out all the kinks, we're fully implemented, we're all in it together, and at what point, if we're at a point where we can fully evaluate our outcomes. I want you to know that while we were busy doing what we do every single day over the past year, behind the scenes in addition to that, we were building something in preparation for 2122. We're building a data system so that we could have access to data more readily available to make better decisions for kids. We were building a new report card structure so that that aligned with it. We were building new curriculum so that the interventions, strategies, supports, and resources were in that curriculum because we knew when kids returned fully in the fall of 2021, we were going to need to have this in place, and we couldn't wait until then to put it in place. So this whole year, while we were doing what we did to keep schools open, keep kids learning, keep kids safe, big lifts in attendance, behind the scenes, Jen and her team too, were working on preparing for 2122. And you're going to see in the next few slides what she has prepared for us in order to be absolutely ready for next school year, in addition to adding a half hour onto the school day.
Thank you. Yeah, so that's the piece of the puzzle, that the implementation of really highly effective change takes, looking at what's wrong, realizing what's going to work to fix it, and then committing to measuring those outcomes and making sure we know how to fix it. So, one of the things that we did last year, I'll use a couple of examples because we really take on a couple of initiatives to focus our attention because as Erica mentioned, not only were we, you know, the additional work of a hybrid learning model this year was very cumbersome in terms of a lot of different things that do not normally occur. So I thought our team did an excellent job sustaining, not only sort of addressing the COVID concerns, but these initiatives that are going to lay the foundation for really skyrocketing achievement. And so one of the examples I'll give you is a system that we have to, that we worked on implementing this year called Performance Matters. It is an add-on, it is a PowerSchool product that actually examines a wide range of data. It helps us determine the root causes or allows us to get really curious about what's going on. If I have a worry about a kid, or let's say I observe something in a classroom and I'm like, is this a pattern? I want to be able to have hands-on data. So prior to that, what it took was about 17 external places where I might have to pull something down into Excel, play with Excel, make data charts and sheets. It was a very cumbersome process to take multiple data points from different places and put it all into one place and say like, how is Tuttle School doing? Or how is the high school doing? Or how are sixth-grade English learners doing, right? It was a very cumbersome process that took multiple layers of technology. So this system is designed to be a comprehensive portal for us to store all state and local assessment, including attendance, grades, and behavioral data, integrate our third-party data, so things when the college board sends us the PSAT scores, it's an upload, and I can get that data visually in these dashboards, which is kind of what you see here. I can see at a glance what's going on with the district today, just like that performance chart. You go to the doctor and you see your child, are they in the 15th percentile? I can kind of see, you know, the color-coded attendance rates that this week, sixth grade had a high, you know, had an outlier. What's going on? Is the data good? Did we forget to do attendance? What's going, we can ask those questions in real time, and so I think that would be instrumental. We can also look at historical data. So for people like Bob Swan, who's looking to support patterns over time and kids who need interventions, and for parents who are sort of communicating with the school about the challenges for their child, we can kind of look if there's a historical pattern there. We can see patterns of if students were, you know, achieving typically in the level three and four range, if they continue on that trajectory, if they go up or they move down. So we have a baseball card report that allows us to pull information on a student that says, this kid's done this over the last couple of years. So if we've identified a student in need, or if we're looking at curriculum, we can even drill down to the standards that are being covered in our assessments and say, how are we doing in number and operation standards in mathematics? What kinds of answers are kids giving on those questions? What kind of work do we need to focus our curriculum on? And so that was one of the big pieces. Because again, in the past, these graphs that you see here, now you could switch the slide, Erica. You know, these slides that you see here, you know, are visually, you know, give you some information, but that did take our, you know, so this will be able to upload and populate, and we can really think and reflect in real time on the data, allowing our principals, our teachers. The other thing that system does is allows it to be secure and private. So teachers who have access to the kids that they need to have access to, and kids and people who don't need access to the data would have, you know, have only their classes or their students. And principals could see the whole picture to get a sense of pattern. So if there's embedded professional learning that needs to be offered, they can address those things. And so that's kind of what that looked like. So we did have an extensive, you know, we saw a couple of patterns, we saw things were really working. Our students proficient and above and in the English learner categories really increased. And we saw some, we saw growth, we see that trajectory, that they're moving closer to that state average. We've even been in the top third of all alliance districts, um, you know, in, in mo, in many cases. So we're looking to kind of really keep on that trajectory because that's always been moving forward. And we think this tool will help us respond in real time when we notice patterns. So if you go to the next slide, that kind of addressed what we need to know. But we also feel that parents are partners in education. And one of the biggest pieces of feedback that coming to us from teachers was that the report cards were cumbersome to fill out. They took a lot of time. They felt like the parents didn't really understand them. It took, um, it took a long time for, for, to go over. And, and we wanted to make sure the link to families was really clear between what is this mean, this number? And what the teacher did in the class, what I can do at home? Because we're really being as effective as an educational community when we're linking that work to what families can support at home. Families here are very engaged and they want to talk to us. They want to say like, I want to help Johnny at home. I want to help, you know, little, little Jenny at home. How can I do that? So we sought out to have a, a group of parents talk to us about assessment practices and student growth reporting. We had about 24 parents in total. In about four different offerings, um, we had nine Spanish-speaking parents attend the Spanish-speaking evening and I, um, it was a benefit to be able to facilitate that and, and speak and listen to people's conversations, um, you know, in Spanish and sort of really get them to kind of talk about the nuance. And one thing that they felt was a visual to help them understand quickly, should I be worried about my kid? That was really the thing that kept coming up. Help me understand. I don't want to talk, can you, I joke around, can you USA Today that for me? Like what, what is, it's up here of like the student will achieve at fluency, can read, can read at levels that, you know, you saw the, the example on, on Tuesday. So families wanted the language to be as simple and consistent as possible. We wanted to have qualitative and quantitative measures that help clarify the connection to what the rating is and like, what data did you use to, like, how do you know my kid is, is reading with, um, you know, at an accurate pace? We can tell them about that. And so that was the, the performance levels that you saw on the previous slide. And this allowed us to sort of explore. I played around with some of the PE and health teachers to think about, you know, if our PE and health standards are reflecting, you know, that students can demonstrate developmentally appropriate motor skills and movement, we want to talk about what that looks like in the classroom. We don't want to bog everybody down, but we also want to have a real-time way to observe those things and to like identify the next steps for a kid who's ni, who's both, um, at the performance level or exceed, or meeting the performance level so we can push that student to the next level in all areas. So this is a sample of one of the other pieces of Performance Matters where we can actually go in and build a rubric that says things like the description of the indicator for motor skills and movement, report card grade, is that they can developmental, demonstrate developmentally appropriate motor skills and movement consistently during classroom instruction. If they can't, they're anchored in a, in a guide and a checklist of what those movements are for second grade or third grade. And if they don't, if they are meeting that, we're wanting still to move them to the next level stretch goal. So it gives them the next step. This is then a real-time thing. Our teachers can take on their touchscreen Chromebook and enter data, weekly, monthly, and these rubrics can be created in the same to sort of replicate what the teachers are doing on paper and pencil to be able to add to that. And this then builds the next slide that Erica was talking about, which takes our, what you see here is the curricular resource for PE and health. I use this as an example because everybody kind of remembers moving in, in school, right? But that's a resource guide from The Great Body Shop, which is a curricular resource that's used for PE and health. And then they take that, we adapt those for local context, right? So I always talk to our teachers, our curriculum is not the thing the company publishes. Our curriculum is adapted for the needs of our kids because we can figure out what they're learning, what their gaps are, what they're coming into us with. And then we adapt it for the local context and we put it in to provide in our public site, which went live this year. So all parents can see sort of, that's a calendar. So you can see the bars represent months. What am I doing with my kid in trimester one and, and, and this is third grade, P, grade five PE? They're learning about working as a team and they learn about working as a team and they talk about injury prevention because if you work with your team and, and, and have good solid emergency strategies and you all know the expectations, then you keep each other safe. And so those are the links that they can make when they have the curriculum work. So those are the kinds of things we did with our public site. And this is all part of a phase-in plan. So each department ha, you know, we are on a three-year cycle of curriculum. So you can't read this if you have the slides in front of you, but you know, it's in a three-year cycle, the first year is to plan, review, and revise. It's those implementation stages. We're looking at the data. What is it saying? Are all of our kids floundering on fractions? Let's fix the fractions unit. And so we identify by year which units are getting which treatment during which times. And that helps us allocate funds fairly and make sure that we're always revisiting by looking at the curriculum, how it's being implemented, and how kids are coming out of it, having learned what we want, what we had expected them to learn. And by the end of three years, if that hasn't happened, we go back and we say, what do we need to address? So that second phase is we, we do the, um, installation where we put the curriculum in place. We develop all the assessments and we begin to give feedback and make sure that we adjust as needed. And then we expect everybody to be fully implementing in year three so that we can get those good measures to determine whether that, that effort has, has worked. And we use, now we'll have the power to look at some of those measures pretty quickly in real time, um, unless, in a less cumbersome way to really see if our curriculum efforts are paying off. Um, and we do find that that's been happening where we've seen those cycles of improvement go through completely. And that is again, the link to our assessment framework, right? So if we want to know in PE if kids have good motor skills, sportspersonship, they can communicate with their teammates, how are we learning about how they did that? How much time does that take a teacher in the classroom? What's the window? How can we get together as a team to send out a reminder? Teachers are busy, families are busy. We want to know when they can expect to like, hey, go to bed early tonight, the mile run is tomorrow. You know, that helps enhance our communication. And so these documents kind of live alongside this, um, Curriculum Insight Family Partnership Learning Guide that can be communicated at open house nights, gives, giving people a balance of kind of what can they expect accord throughout the year, enhancing communication if someone is saying this particular item or something I want my teacher to know about my child's experience. Oh, we went to Saratoga this summer. I want to bring that up. Can he bring his, you know, tricorn hat to school? All of those things will be there for them to be able to connect to their school, to their community and give us that, um, that insight.
This is fantastic and I'll tell you why. Because I don't know about you, but I have a kid when I ask him, hey, what, you know, what unit of study are you working on and how, what are you doing in school? I don't know. I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, or I get a one-word, one-word answer like, uh, science, we did science today. I would love the opportunity to go online and at any point during the year, be able to see what unit of study they're working on. Click on that link and see some of the lessons that they're engaging in or labs that they're doing in science. And that's what the public curriculum site does for parents. It creates a partnership and it allows them to access the information. If, you know, the information is not readily available, the conversations that they're having with their kids.
And then the last slide, so of our next steps, we are looking to enhance a pathways model at East Haven High School. Erica talked about social emotional learning. We talked about curriculum to help kids transition. So our pathways model that we're exploring, we're in the exploration stage right now, is, you know, hopefully going to look like grade nine, all students get a launching success course where they can learn academic and social skills to succeed in high school and explore career pathways and really make valuable an East Haven High School diploma because not that everybody has to choose a major or specialize, but I, I can give you an example of, of kids that I know, you know, I wish someone told me what it meant to score high in a visual spatial because I ended up going to trade school and I'm really good at like seeing how the electric box come together, but I don't know that I ever like knew that about myself until I kind of just said, I don't know what to do. So we want to get kids learning about what those assessment scores mean on those aptitude tests and things like that and help them understand and unpack where they might channel those, those capacities into their S, East Haven High School experience. So we might have then in grade 10, students explore. And our guidance team, along with our CTE teachers, have developed course planning guides that suggest if you're super into animals, you might want to focus on classes like Connecticut Wildlife, Marine Science, and then take this bio and this and that so that by the end of the four years, you've got a little specialty. Or you can get a global studies certificate by taking certain types of courses in our social studies department. Or enhance our manufacturing new pathway, our transportation and logistics pathway because you learned in ninth grade after taking one of our, our student success plan assessments, that you're a kid who can do really well with his or her hands. And we want to increase representation in those areas too. Uh, we have a really robust health careers pathway and we're really improving, I think, in that area to help students sort of think about. And these were designed by our team, thinking about the careers that are high demand and the things that we think kids, social skills, they need to, they need to address. So that's sort of the next step.
And what's really great about this is that it's aligned to our mission and vision, college and/or career-ready. And so these pathways open up doors for kids who may not be college-bound. The new one coming up is going to be a manufacturing one, right? So, um, we've been meeting with local manufacturing companies. We're making some changes to this building, building a manufacturing, um, area or bringing in machinery. We're going to use some of our rescue funds to create a brand-new manufacturing, um, pathway. What we've learned and we had, um, the chair of the Connecticut Manufacturing, Connecticut Manufacturing Committee here, along with a lobbyist, is that there is such a shortage for these types of workers. And so kids who have an aptitude for this or interest can leave the high school with a skill set, walk into a $65,000 job for a company that will help pay for their college education and also give them additional skills that they need to be successful in the job and also a career pathway and advancement within, within the company as well. And we've got several of those companies right here in, um, East Haven. In fact, Mr. Hennessy is hosting a meeting at his office at the end of July for one of those manufacturing companies, myself and the town. So, moving on, I know I only have a few more minutes. Fiscal operations, this year was really about reworking the existing operations of our entire district. Critical to keeping our schools open, um, at the start of this past year, the board worked together to help develop these goals and then we execute, executing them on the ground. If we successfully lead our school district in redesigning, creating, improving, and sustaining strong, stable organizational, operational, and fiscal structures, then we can create the best and safest educational experience to empower our students to explore and achieve in school and beyond. So, some of the things we did. We negotiated a really great transportation contract, contract for savings of over 250K while providing students with a new safer fleet of buses. Um, and we partnered with a company that's actually investing in the town of East Haven and looking to purchase land to, um, house their bus yard. We negotiated a para-contract as part of our talent, talent retention, um, to help sustain individuals in those roles and keep turnover low. Uh, we led a budget development process. Not only that ended in zero fiscal year balances, um, from the past previous year and anticipated 2021, but also budgets that appropriately support the initiatives that we want to implement next school year. We revised tons of policy and we added tons new COVID policy. Um, we've been focusing on our health insurance, um, our, our social media policies and our 9,000 series policies. To our buildings, we made upgrades and enhancements to the turf. We did multiple playgrounds. We, um, updated and did some maintenance on our HVAC systems, lots of field upgrades. We're in the middle of our huge rug replacement district-wide, replacing with tile floors for, um, allergens and keeping those, those classroom environments healthier. We talked a little bit about our manufacturing center. There's a whole operational piece, um, that goes with that. We are, um, we did our sound systems, we're doing shades. The aesthetics of our building is important because it exudes a sense of pride. In terms of, um, let's go into some, let's go into some of the detail here. One of the things that we've been focusing on in terms of operations is enrollment, right? So we contract with NESDEC every year for enrollment projections. And you can see over the course of, of our year, K-12 from 2019 projected through 2029 were anticipated to drop. However, when NESDEC did this, um, study, what, what they didn't take into consideration were the multiple, um, housing projects that are going on in district and some of the new projects that just popped up.
And that's why they projected too, too far out into the future.
Right.
They, they were just too heavy down.
Yes, but I have to say, their 19, 20 projections fell within 34 students of the K-12 total, which is pretty good. And their 2021 fell within 17 students of the K-12 total. So in the near future, they're pretty accurate. However, when they do the projection next year, we are sitting down with them to make sure that they understand the magnitude of construction and residential housing plans that are going to be going on in our town. 69 houses around Granis Lake, 69 homes, 69 families, times a couple of children each, translates into enrollment increases. A 55 and older building on Sperry Lane translates into older people selling their homes and young families moving in. So this has implications. So with NESDEC, we are going to work on making sure they know some of those, um, residential projects that are going on so we can get good predictions on many of the out years. So we do look at this enrollment data. This is what we use for our budget projection. This is what we use to equitably, equitable allocate resources and funds to each one of the schools and what we use to decide whether we need more teachers at any particular grade level. I took, you took some pictures of some of the operational, these are the floors. We're ripping out all the rugs in all the classrooms and putting tile floors. This is the result of some of that work so that by the end of next year, every single one of our classrooms does not, no longer has a rug. Obviously, our playground work has been very extensive and we're about to enter into a Tuttle School, which is our last one. Here's the Ferrara School Playground that, um, was just recently opened. Um, we've done awnings when we reworked operations of our schools for arrival and dismissal. We, um, used some of our capital project funding to improve sidewalks around buildings because we had kids being dropped off in multiple locations. We had awnings because they were now entering school where they didn't have protection from rain or snow or, what was that called? A tornado microburst? And we did handicap ramps and awnings at Deer Run. 80% of the sidewalk around JMMs. And this summer, we'll complete the JMMs project at sidewalks at Overbrook School by the roadway. We're fixing the side, some of the sidewalks at the high school and replacing the compass in front of the Mogwinn School. Going forward, we're going to use capital monies to repair additional sidewalks and slowly get into a position of maintaining rather than fixing. Lot, lots happened on the operation front. And I think you can see from the amount of bids and, um, projects and vendors that the boards approving every single week, that a lot of enhancements to our districts are taking place. Some of this with capital funds, but some of it with some of our rescue funds. And we have poised ourselves so that we are now doing a lot of preventative maintenance instead of reactive maintenance, which is more cost-efficient, effective, and healthier overall. Finally, because I know my time is quickly coming to a close, we have our talent. And in, in terms of talent, this was about evaluation and monitoring, um, and, and tenure teacher status. It's about our new teachers successfully passing team, filling job vacancies, and retaining high-quality teachers and subs. And so our theory of action is if we provide teachers with high-quality professional learning, supports, programs, and the conditions necessary to improve and sustain the effectiveness of instructional practice, then achievement and growth for all students will substantially improve over time. All of it's focused on the increased student growth and development academically and socially and emotionally. So in terms of talent, we've done tons with recruitment. We've reestablished our partnerships with Sacred Heart and Southern. We've reestablished our partnerships with Sacred Heart and Southern and some of the colleges to take on more student teachers, but also interns, interns that will spend the entire year in our district, 11 of them next year. And they will be working with students, doing their student teaching. We watch. There are some talented individuals at the end of the year when they've completed their practicum and get their teaching certification. They knew, know East Haven. We have vacancies. It's like a talent recruitment pool. We also have the relay program. This is new to us. Our first bilingual educator in district went through the relay program. As for working professionals who can attend school outside of school hours over the course of two years and earn a teaching certificate.
Is that like the old ARC?
It's in it, no, it's different than ARC. ARC still exists. This is, yeah, this is relay. Relay is really, really unique because it, they work with the individual. We have four paraprofessionals currently in this relay program, two of whom at the end of next year will be getting their certificate and the other two will be entering this year. So in two years, we'll be getting a certificate. So you hear a lot from people like, we should be investing in our paraprofessionals, providing opportunities like this and working with them so they can intend, attend the classes, but still work, helps cultivate that learning and certification process for them. Evaluation has been a little different. There were some flexibilities in 2019, 20 around evaluation. There's flexibilities in 2021 and Jen will be bringing some flexibilities for 21, 22 relative to the pandemic. Doesn't mean teachers don't get evaluated. It just means what they're evaluated on, what they're focused on, how their goals are structured are a little bit different. And you'll hear a little bit more about that from Jen in a subsequent meeting.
It certainly doesn't make it, like it makes it easier or.
No, nope.
It is, they're not.
They're not. And this year Jen did really great work with our administrators and myself, and we did video inter-visits. Typically during the school year, we would take our administrators to different schools and we do like instructional rounds, walkthroughs of classrooms, observe instruction, come back together, look at strengths, look at areas for growth, talk about feedback we would provide to teachers so that was high quality and specific. We weren't able to do that this year due to COVID, but what Jen did was she took us on video inter-visits. She worked with principals to actually capture live instruction in classrooms and we still did that view of the instruction. We still looked at it. We still talked about the strengths and opportunities for growth. We still looked at the principal's feedback and we talked about how we can calibrate ourselves as evaluators to be consistent, but also grow ourselves as, as evaluators to be able to identify areas of growth and tag that to very explicit feedback that helped teachers grow and develop.
And they reported at their end of year meetings, the administrators, that either they'd had conversations with teachers that said, the feedback that you gave me this year was incredibly powerful and got me thinking about things in a different way. I had at least five administrators say that in their end of year meetings.
Yeah. Professional development learning is huge for us. I think the state has, how many things that the teacher has to do in a year?
Thirty-six legislatively mandated topics that boards, boards of education districts are required to cover in a, in a cycle of three or three, one to three year cycle.
Yep. So Jen has a yearly calendar of professional learning activities. I know that she shares that link for you. You get to see all the sessions that are going on. What we try to do is leverage the internal expertise of our teachers, ask them what their strengths are, where they feel comfortable, and then offer professional development to their colleagues in those areas. Our new teacher orientation sets new teachers up for success. All of our teachers who participated in team passed. And then we offer support sessions throughout the year for them to come to. You need help writing a reflection paper? Here's a session you can attend. You need help developing your P-GAP, which is their goal? Here's a session you can come and attend. So really that support for them so that they are successful. We have been successful in posting and filling most of our vacancies within 60 days. Obviously there's some tough areas in there. Special education has, has become a huge, huge area that we struggle with in addition to school psychologists, science teachers and math teachers. But this year with the state flexibility, we were able to bring in more subs. And now we're looking at programming in ways that we can increase the quality of our substitutes. And additional para compensation for high quality, qualified paras that are able to serve as substitutes. We also are doing building subs so that each school has a set of a building sub who's familiar with the kids, familiar with the school, familiar with the operations of the school, who lives there every day and can provide sub coverage. We talk about negotiations all the time. We're constantly in negotiations. At one time we were negotiating like five contracts at once. We have since gotten ourselves on a schedule where we're never negotiating more than two contracts in one year. So we could dedicate the necessary time, attention and detail into negotiating high quality contracts. She's in. Yeah, okay. And then finally retention. Teacher retention is huge. We have a little issue with our salary schedule right in the middle. We, you saw a couple resignations on the last board agenda. So working through negotiations to try to fix that, making sure that we have really positive and supportive culture and climates. Our teacher of the year program is really, really great. If you haven't attended the teacher of the year breakfast, you have to come. So inspiring. Offering stipends and leadership positions to our teachers so that they can grow and there's places for them to develop. Making pipelines, creating teachers on special assignment positions so they can take on more of a leadership role. This year our staff, I think, did an amazing job in really, really challenging circumstances. We asked them to fill the role of really first responders. And, you know, cognizant that our kids and parents were taking cues from our behavior, they did an amazing job. And they, they responded magnificently and we're really proud of the work that they did this year.
They, they faced the same challenges that the children faced.
They did.
They had to go through all that too.
Yep.
And I'm telling you, there is no way to say it's easy teaching online and, and.
No.
In front of you and there's just no.
I've said it multiple times.
Yeah, there's no right way.
There's no way you can sustain teaching in person and remote at the same time. So I'm grateful for the board support in full in-person learning next year. You know, outside of what may have to happen for quarantine guidelines or whatever happens with that. But, you know, in, in summary, our primary goal this year was to attend to the immediate health and safety requirements as well as the social, emotional, mental health needs of students and adults. We, our, our goal was to ensure that grade level standards aligned instruction with just-in-time academic, social, emotional and academic supports were in place and invest in our staff and our infrastructure and our technology to try to keep those gaps from widening and any type of digital divide that would dismantle an equitable opportunity and outcome for every single one of our kids. There's a lot, there's some next steps. I told you this year, we built that data infrastructure that you saw from Jen. She revised curriculum so that it has the information in it. We purchased some program and resources in preparation for next year, knowing that we were going to have some gaps to close. So next steps, time, extending the school day, data, using our new system to nail down what every kid needs. Instruction, matching instructions to that need. Interventions to make sure the supports and the enrichment is there. And creating new pathways so that our, our kids who may not be college bound have options in, into moving into a career and can leave this high school with some skills to step into a higher paying job in a potential company or organization of their choice. This year was also really great because we were fully in, in person and we did some really unique work and we actually had two different remote learning models that we engaged in. I had the opportunity to sit on two national-led panels on attendance and engagement. I sat on another national panel for early childhood education and transitions from preschool to kindergarten because we did not, a lot of districts lost kindergarten enrollment. We did not lose kindergarten enrollment this year. And share some of our strategies around that work and what worked. And I also got selected to, I'll have a publication in Edweek in July. And the title is, Don't Let a Good Crisis Go to Waste. So I'll be amongst a few other national roundtable superintendents who have put in short little 600-word entries on our experiences this year and they're called Collections From the Kitchen Table. So I think the work that we did this year was superb in the most challenging of circumstances. And while we may not have gotten everything right, we focused on the right things and we afforded our kids an opportunity to attend school in person every day if they wanted to and then created a remote learning option, changed it and made sure that any kid who wasn't comfortable coming to school had those same opportunities. We kept our athletics going. We kept our clubs going. We kept our curriculum and instruction work going. And I'm really proud of the work that we did and I'm really thankful for the board and town support on that work. And so while I have a couple more slides, I am going to stop there and see if you have any questions. Does anybody have any questions remaining from the presentation? All right, thank you.